We just crossed the 63 minute mark, Robin. Here's a question for you. Is this, is this too long for a podcast? Are we, have we gone too long?
I mean, if it's a good one.
Well, you've just lived through 63 minutes. Tell me, is this a good podcast? That's the new question. Is this a good podcast that we're experiencing right now?
We're rolling. We're rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the Wedge neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
Okay, so this is the part where I scold you, Jason, about, about the terrible audio outcome of the Jono episode. I asked you a couple of times, how do I sound? You said, I sounded fine. Jono, Jono seemed to think something was up, but I trusted you.
Previously on Wedge Live.
How do I sound?
You sound loud.
Say more. Sound good?
Yeah, you sound fine.
I could fix it probably. Do I try to fix it?
No, you said, I mean, you sound fine to me right now.
And
Wait, did, did Jono ever say anything that he thought that you didn't sound good or anything?
He said, your mic is a little hot. I don't even know what that means. I don't know if that means loud or my voice is, uh, something was wrong. He noticed and you didn't. You're the, you're my longtime partner in co-hosting. And you let me down. If anyone watches the Jono episode, they will see that I had to do like a director's commentary thing just to minimize the amount of my voice as it was recorded. And I don't have a good voice as it is. So on a laptop mic, it's especially hard on the ears. And I want people, I want people to know it was Jason's fault.
Yeah, I mean, for all you know, it could have been a ploy that, you know, I was just trying to get you out of the episode entirely.
It could have been, could have been because you sounded really good. You sounded eloquent. And every time I, every time I talked, it was just me in a little box talking about how bad everything is. And I think the negativity may have brought down what I think was a good performance from Jono Cowgill. I feel I like, yeah, cowgirl. I'm still getting it wrong. I feel like I let, I let Jono down. You know, somebody invests 90 minutes of their time for your, your stupid YouTube interview show slash podcast. He's the president of the park board. Ninety minutes. And we, we let him down.
Part of we did.
Mostly you. Robin, Robin is here. I should introduce the show. This is the Wedge Live Podcast. My co-host today is Jason Garcia. And our guest is Ward Two candidate for Minneapolis City Council, Robin Wonsley Warloba. I'm going with the full name.
Warloba, yes.
Warloba, Warloba.
There we go. There we go.
I might, I might drop to just Wonsley now.
Robin W. Square. That also works.
Yes. Tell us about your podcast and specifically, how long are your episodes? How long is too long for an episode? Is 90 minutes too long for an episode? Are all of these questions about episode length making the episode we're experiencing right now too long? So what do you think?
Well, I'll start with the first question. Um, so around January of this year, my campaign came up with the idea of creating a podcast called Robin's Nest. Um, and really just having the space to amplify some of the amazing work that's happening on the ground by, you know, or led by our own community members, you know? Um, and largely because we know corporate media does not amplify the folks who are doing the work. Like for instance, you know, around the East Phillips Indoor Farm, um, even in my organizing background around like 15, it was, it wasn't until like, we built massive public support around it where we started getting publications. And that's, um, typical of a lot of, of, you know, the grassroots organizing that happens in our city. So we wanted to use our platform to really elevate, because we're socialist and you should be elevating working class struggles and efforts that's being led by Black and Brown Indigenous communities. And we wanted to do that with our podcast. So we've been doing that, um, since January. Um, we've had some phenomenal guests on the show from, you know, early on, as I mentioned, um, the East Phillips Neighborhood Institute that's been organizing around the East Phillips Indoor Farm. We've also had folks on from Yes For Minneapolis. Um, we've had healers on because that is also important. Um, and our whole tagline is around heal bill and rise up. So we should talk about the healing work that's happening in our community. Um, and then just our most recent episode, we actually had Alex Vitale, uh, come on to talk about, um, his scholarship and just his analysis around policing. Um, and Alex has become just such a prominent left voice of, you know, how policing undermines our community's ability to thrive and actually provide for the collective needs of working class people and Black and Brown Indigenous communities. Um, and every episode we've, you know, I think initially when we started out, it was like, let's do 20 minutes. But then you talk to these amazing folks and it's just like, oh, 40 minutes passed. And then you'll talk some, to some really dope folks like, uh, Marsha Howard, who's a caretaker of George Floyd Square. We're actually doing a two-part series because we spoke with her for like three hours and wow, you can't really put a podcast show.
I would, I'd do it. You couldn't stop me from doing, I would do it. Three hours.
So yeah, we broke it up into two. So we're gonna, we dropped the first one a couple of months ago. And then we're gonna drop a second, um, part of it in following up, just, you know, what has taken place in George Floyd Square since the city, uh, launched its reopening attacks on it, uh, on June, June 3rd. Um, so yeah, it's been a really, really great place, I think, to draw inspiration from when there's so much despair in the world and just seeing our communities are not letting up. They're not capitulating to despair. They're still showing up every single day in so many ways to make a better, um, and just city for all of us. And they deserve their flowers and deserve that recognition.
I'm sorry for starting the episode with a stupid question. It's how, it's how I usually do things. And you turned it into a substantive answer. So that was we try to ease things in with the stupid questions, get people comfortable.
That wasn't, this is a podcast. I mean, there's no stupid questions.
Sure, sure there are. So let's, let's move on to some substance. You're, you're a candidate for city council. And I think if, if a candidate is campaigning and doing it right, they are the best people to talk to about what people are thinking and feeling in, in this election year. So what, what are you hearing from people in Ward Two? Uh, what are the concerns? What, what might be, what might we be surprised to learn people are, are thinking about this year? What are you hearing?
Yeah, we've gotten an airfold and that's largely, uh, has been a testament to just a strong ground game. My campaign, um, has led, we've hit more than 8,000 doors in the war twice now. Um, so we've gotten to speak to thousands of residents from your long time suburb resident, residence to like your recent, uh, college student. Um, and I know one of the clearest issues that's at the top of everyone's mind is of course, like around public safety. Um, people are not feeling safe in their communities, but they also feel like there's a vacuum of, of getting safety because there's so much distrust around our current system of policing. Um, and because we have, you know, this public safety amendment that, you know, communities on the ground have spent several years organizing behind, we're wrestling with that. And people are trying to make sense of what this will, um, or how this will address, uh, public safety concerns in our crisis right now. So we've, um, had, we've had a lot of conversations around that, really productive conversations. So much so, we formed our own, uh, comprehensive public safety plan, um, to show there are a number of things with the budget, with policies that city council, um, members can exercise if they have the political courage to really move the needle forward on having a policing system that is not inherently apartheid. Um, or apartheid system where, you know, folks along East River Parkway or Lake of the Owls, they get, you know, five-star safety. When a crisis happened in your community, you're not getting, you know, armed aggressive, uh, Officer Joe. Um, you're getting a concerned compassionate, let's figure out something. Or you might actually get a mental health, you know, crisis responder. We don't get that in most, uh, working class and Black and Brown, um, areas. So, um, we've talked a lot about public safety, but Ward Two, what has actually been another, I think, interesting concern is around, uh, the semi trucks. Um, a lot of folks have been concerned, uh, around the semi trucks parking along residential areas and how that has, um, become a hazard for drivers and also for families. Cause you know, what if your kids went across the street and the semi truck is blocking, uh, intersection? So we've heard a lot of conversations of how we would take that on. Also Lake Street. Um, we've had several, several, uh, meaningful conversations with residents about how do we develop the Lake Street corridor, um, into a more vibrant place. And that is actually, um, we dropped my campaign, we dropped our community commitments a couple of days ago. And where we talk about, we are going to donate that sizable city council salary to open up our office right in Ward Two. So, you know, residents don't have to wait until 7:00 AM on Monday mornings to do coffee hours with me. Uh, but you could come into our office and also we're going to use it as an organizing hub. And one of the things that we want to do that around is like equitable development because developing Lake Street shouldn't just, you know, be grounded in opening the doors to chain stores, which is already happening. I mean, in the wake of the uprising. We now have a Raising Canes. Like who asked a Raising Canes to replay, to be replaced or like Wendy's? Like, I don't think that was what the community will want to see be built in their community. So how to have community-led development, um, alone that corridor that actually meets the needs, um, of our residents. And people are really excited about that. Like, yeah, maybe I want a community center, especially one to replace the third precinct. Like how to make that happen. Um, so yeah, that, even housing. I mean, and these have been great avenues for us to amplify existing efforts on the ground around, uh, Yes For Minneapolis and the Rent Control Coalition, Minneapolis United for Rent Control Coalition of, of how we can start to tackle some of those things, um, together. And, and you have the opportunity to, you know, initiate some of that work on November 2nd. Cause two of those things, I mean, three are going to be on the ballot.
Let's talk about Lake Street. What, what is the future of Lake Street? Not just from a development perspective, but, uh, transportation wise as well. I, I think, uh, there's a bus lane potentially on the table for Lake Street. And, uh, my experience of Lake Street is a very hostile place to walk, at least like in the, the wittier section. And of course, like over by, uh, Hayawatha and the light rail station, very hostile to anyone who's not traveling in a car and even people who are in cars. It's, it's a bad experience, not pleasant. It's dangerous, uh, in terms of just crossing the street. Talk about your priorities for transportation and how we might make Lake Street, uh, a more pleasant, livable, safer place to, to get around.
And we're speaking in reference to in, in Ward Two, sorry. Uh, my tablet. Okay. You're going to hear my phone in the background. I don't know where my tablet is. So sorry about that. In terms of Ward Two around Lake Street, I think one of the clearest issues is, um, the, the busing, um, system and more so of how many workers in our communities do not feel like it's a reliable mode of transportation. Uh, many folks find themselves, especially if you have to commute from downtown or you need to have multiple, you know, um, uh, stops or layovers in your trip. They find themselves waiting, um, and buying, you know, the transit to be late. Which again, if you're, uh, ordinary working class person, you being an hour late, that can put you in a very precarious position economically. And all of us are facing a lot of economic precarity these days in light of the pandemic. Um, so I know, again, these things aren't isolated, you know, drivers, there's a shortage in concerns amongst, um, drivers based off of, you know, safety concerns, like we don't have sufficient funding of our transit department so that we can have drivers who are, you know, there to keep the buses running on time or all of our modes of, or public modes of transportation running on time. Um, and also, you know, making repairs to our, uh, public transit system. So one of, or a couple of the things that we would like to see in my campaign is one, make it just free. Like all of public transit should be free. Um, people should not have to jump through hoops to access reduced fare programs. Like just make it free, make it widely accessible. We will also like to see, um, to really correlate with our climate goals for it to be retrofitted, um, to be green compliant. So making sure all of our modes of transportation, especially buses are electrified. Um, we will also like to see in thinking of a jobs creation program because once, you know, the ATU, it's, it's, and that's, yeah, ATU provides some pretty secure employment for working class people. And I would love to see that, you know, expand to have more representation from young adults, especially Black and Brown communities to be able to, um, access these really secure working class jobs where you can get a pension, where you can get union representation. I mean, you can actually provide a public service that, you know, residents do value. Um, also I think alone Lake Street, what is, uh, also becoming a concern is also like how to expand the options of transportation outside of busing, outside of, um, the light rail station. Um, so I've had several, uh, or a couple of conversations with, uh, folks who helped create the Midway Green, the Midtown Greenway, um, and really looking at how do we expand the Greenway, you know, especially from south to north? So that people can also have biking as an option as opposed of, you know, having to take buses and waiting. Um, and would love to see the city, you know, fund a biking program that will provide high quality bikes to, um, residents. Um, so that they can make use of that. Um, but I would love to see that Greenway be expanded across the city to also add a greener option for transit. Um, so I think those are a couple of things. I mean, in at least in our part of town, I wouldn't say there's fears of crossing Lake Street like that danger. Maybe that intersection around, um, what is that? Uh, mid, mid? No, that's not mid.
High Lake?
High.
Hayawatha?
It is not High Lake, but that is not, it's Lake Street. It's Lake, right? It's a lake stop, right?
Uh, the light rail stop, you mean?
Yes, the light rail. And I think the, the concerns around there is like, it's intersectional with housing. We know there's, um, a number of, of folks who, um, take refuge, you know, under that underway or underpassing, uh, many of which, you know, they struggle with substance abuse. They are without shelter. So that has become a, a hub for folks who are experiencing, you know, housing insecurities and substance abuse issues. And I think this is a larger dynamic that our city, um, needs to take on in a very aggressive way of how are we providing transitional, um, housing and permanent housing options that does not have to, um, rely on whether tenants are clean or not. Like people cannot start a pathway towards recovery if they don't know where they're staying the next day. So I think concerns around that, we definitely have to address how are we creating, um, actual accessible, um, housing? Also, I would love to see the city or me work with state, uh, officials to also support the creation of wet houses too. Cause again, shelter should not be dependent on people, um, having substance abuse issues or not. People deserve housing regardless. I've had loved ones, um, who had, have dealt with substance abuse issues all their lives. And I know the importance of, at least for my family, like knowing that we could find them in case of anything happened because their housing was provided. We knew where they were staying. That's not the case for a lot of their folks out there. So I think we definitely have to prioritize getting housing, um, and, and, you know, other necessary supports for residents who do want to start a pathway towards recovery and having some stable, um, you know, living options such as like seeking jobs and things of that nature, even reconnecting with their family. Cause many of them don't have those connections with their family because of addiction. So I think we would have to do an intentional wraparound response for, you know, our residents who have, you know, made that, uh, overpassing a refuge site to really address any safety concerns there. Um, but yeah, some of my thoughts.
And to be clear, when I, when I said safety crossing the street, I meant from like cars hitting you while they're turning or not, not in a crime sense or in a public safety sense.
Yeah. And I can say like from the conversations, that's at least alone Lake Street from many haha, I haven't gotten a lot of feedback around that being a particular concern.
Okay. Uh, so here, here's a question. You're going to be tempted to answer this with talking points. You really, you're going to be so tempted and I'm going to encourage you to back off the talking points, Robin. Back off.
Got you.
Don't give me no talking points.
My hands are empty. No points.
You've been warned. So what are, what are you learning about yourself and Minneapolis through this campaign? Because it's a, it's a huge endeavor. You know, you're raising a bunch of money. You've got budgets. You've got volunteers. A lot of people are counting on you. You're talking about big issues. You're talking to so many voters. Like you're probably imagining yourself in the role. And so, uh, and it's like, it's a big experience. I can, it might, might be changing you. I don't know. But like, what are you learning about yourself or the city or humanity from going through this big experience?
I think the most immediate thing, and it ties to like my podcast, you know, people are out here doing the work. Like, you know, most of my experience of organizing in Minneapolis has largely been rooted because city hall has not been, um, an ally to many working class people, to Black and Brown Indigenous, you know, residents who are facing crises every single day. Um, city hall has not listened to their cries or their demands. Um, and what I've seen over the course of our election, even prior to, like people have not, and are not waiting on city hall to get it together. They are showing up every single day through mutual aid, through, um, informal organizing and advocacy to meet the needs of their neighbors and their family and their loved ones. And that's beautiful to see of like, you're not alone in your efforts to want to change things for the better here. Um, and then also just, it shows that, you know, I think city hall is often a space where, you know, people are paid to be experts on these issues. You know, people have probably gotten 50, 60, maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt to become trained and, and, and gain expertise on, on planning. And then you go out here and again, like meeting with one of the, uh, former, uh, executive directors of the, uh, Midway, uh, mid, the Midtown Greenway, um, coalition. And them not having that background, but like pulling together neighbors to be like, let's create a, a green highway in our communities and we'll figure this stuff along the way. It's just like, our communities have the expansive potential where many of them already have so much knowledge about the, about many of the issues that our residents are experiencing. And they have ideas. They have policies already that they've co-created with each other to address these things. You know, I, again, East Phillips Indoor Farms 15, that did not come from insiders inside of city hall. Like that was literally waiters and other hospitality staff that like connected with, you know, other hospitality workers in Seattle and Chicago. And it was like, what, what are y'all experiencing? How do we create a pipeline to get a $30,000 annual income? Or how do we actually create a green energy hub? Like residents who have kids in multiple jobs are doing the work of what we think to be, you know, our own city staffers. And again, to see them not be acknowledged, their labor, their expertise is really saddening. Um, and so to me, it's just like, whatever we need to make the city better, we have more than enough people ready to join and hop on that bandwagon to make that possible. Um, another thing that I witnessed is there is also a lot of folks who are, I would say not more so than the people who are ready to do the work. Um, but there is a pretty loud minority that does not want to see those folks being empowered. They don't want to see, um, the status quo of things be changed because the status quo has benefited them. And there are segregated areas of the city. Um, and they find ways to dominate and take up space in city hall, to take up space in the ears of elected officials, to get the masses of folks, you know, solutions and, 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 and efforts dismissed and discredited. Um, and that's been heartbreaking to be like, there's a small minority of these folks, um, that are super loud. But learning that just because you're the loudest doesn't mean that what you're capping for is actually, you know, the majority of like, it's not the majority that wants that. Um, and I think individually, it has shown, especially in this election, I think many of us can agree, this is one of the most racially charged elections. I mean, we're talking about one year after, one of the most historic uprisings that will go and inspire more than 50 other countries to have protests and their own uprisings around public safety. Like we're coming in at the wake of that. Um, and the world is watching us and we literally have folks who are capping in this election to keep the same conditions, to keep the same systems in place that led to the death of George Floyd and for half of our city burning down. Um, and to then be part of, and not part, but to go to some very, very unexpected extremes to keep the status quo. And it can be scary. I mean, in my own campaign, we've been harassed by people. I've been insulted by, you know, I've had racial slurs said towards me. I've been targeted by the democratic establishment in a number of ways because we're not running independent. I mean, we're not running on that slate, like, and all we're simply running on or my campaign is really just saying, people deserve food. People deserve jobs. People should be treated as humans. And that should be a priority and a value in which our city is organized around. That is the value and a priority that our city should, you know, wake up every day and, and try to figure out, how are we going to uplift this? How are we going to honor this? Um, and people are like, no. So you learn every single day, cause it's so easy to be like, I'm not going to step into this space. I'm not going to step into power to make these changes because the people, some people's hatred is really, really loud and really hurtful. And it's very easy to be fearful and to retreat because, because of that. But you recognize your capacity to be brave in the face of so much animosity, so much targeting, so much hatred. You learn that you are much more bigger in your fields.
Yeah, I've talked to women of color who run for office and like a theme that runs through it is there's just, there's an extra level of just animosity and hatred that, uh, you will experience going out there, putting yourself out there and talk to people. Cause you can't, can't keep yourself from having to talk to the bad people.
Mm-hmm. It's real.
Jason, I'm going to warn, I'm going to warn you in this next series, uh, with your questions, stay off your talking points too. Don't give me your talking points. Just ask some real questions, not some talking points questions.
Oh, all right. Yeah. So I, I can't use my, my normal talking point about how capitalism is bad or anything.
Get off your talking points.
Is that a talking point or fact? No, I mean, like, that's fact.
John's just mad because my talking points are right. Um, so one of the things that, um, you know, you have talked about a little bit here, um, in some of your previous answers are, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the issues that we see in Minneapolis revolve around, um, insecurities in, you know, housing or income or, um, transportation, like the inability to get to work reliably and things like that. And I think, you know, in Minneapolis, we've seen for a long time, housing insecurity being a massive force. housing insecurity being a massive force that people don't necessarily understand or don't really um want to address in a comprehensive way. Um, I know the mayor will talk at length about how his solution has been to put more money in certain funds and things like that. And um, I can totally understand that, you know, as, as part of a system, that's one piece of what's required. But, you know, we look back in the history of Minneapolis going back, you know, thirty years in the early nineties when people were um squatting in a lot of the buildings along the riverfront downtown. Uh, because they're, you know, living in very unsafe conditions because there weren't other places for them to shelter and things like that. And, you know, we've had different people on city council, different mayors. And a lot of people have addressed, you know, saying that housing is important. And, you know, Jacob Frye promised to end homelessness in five years and things like that. Um, so this is something that we're struggling with and it's something that um disproportionately impacts black people and Latinx people and immigrants. Um, how do you, how does your campaign look at the housing struggles that we're having? And what are the solutions that you would like to work with your fellow city council members on uh if you win the election?
Well, you named it at the beginning of it's capitalism and not capitalism and like just, you know, the trendy sense of like, oh, it's just capitalism. But no, like, um, you can trace this all the way back to the eighties, you know, where there was an intentional, from the federal to state to municipal level, there was intentional encouragement for cities to divest in their own public and city owned housing and to place those um assets or, well, essentially that's what they were perceived or liabilities actually um into the hands of the market. Um, so you know, that's why, and I could say from Chicago, you could trace the wide decimation of public housing. Um, and then in replacement of those public housing, you know, high rises, what you see is the land be sold um to uh corporate real estate um developers. And then seeing mixed income or completely, you know, just new condos and market rate housing um replace what was, you know, public housing. Um, and then we're told that that is the solution. That is how we, you know, create a supply of, of housing. Um, but going back to the issue of capitalism, that is housing that is created for the sake of profits. And there is no regulations and we want to, I can, you could trace this back to in order to divest from the, the public good which around housing, that means you also do need to deregulate. Because corporate or real estate uh firms, they don't want to be told what to do or to have caps on how much they can, you know, charge people to live and what they just developed. They want to make their money back and more. So you also see uh expansive rollback of protections that largely, you know, working class people unions fought for, you know, for a number of decades. We see the repealing of that. So now essentially you have cities, including Minneapolis, all across the nation, who are literally giving plate checks to profit, I mean, uh, property and corporate developers to come build in their communities. And we've seen that even more so here in Minneapolis with the twenty forty plan. Um, which again, I say is a neoliberal solution to what was also presented as a housing crisis then to say, fine, we need a supply of, of, of housing. Okay, we can't do this as a city. We don't have money for this. Uh, let's invite, you know, corporations and corporate developers to take up this need for us and, and, you know, provide the supply. And surprise, surprise, you know, the, what we then develop or what we, or what we create as regulations is these like piecemeal AMIs that says, you know, you can have ten percent of your ninety unit building as affordable housing for people who make sixty thousand dollars a year. So you get to charge them twelve hundred dollars for their one bedroom. That's affordable. Um, and that is what we largely have right now. We have tons of housing development that's going up every single day. Even in my experience, like I just moved from one Luna apartment, less than a year of being open. And they charge for a two bedroom, two thousand dollars. Also, I know too, without the lack of regulations, many of these developments also have floors of housing that are literally reserved for Airbnb. So if you look at sites like Sonder, another air uh Airbnb, which is why we want to tax Airbnb. Um, they have literally tons of units across these new developments that they're charging more than a month's rent for you to rent, you know, short term. So we've literally given the market and even created its symptoms, you know, rollback or created tax reliefs for corporate developers to come build housing that is then not attainable, not affordable for your average resident. Um, and instead it drives up more property values. It also drives out the people who lived in that community originally because they no longer can afford it. Um, and that, and we've also have either created or passed very mediocre regu- regulatory reforms of these developers, or we've weakened, you know, the ones that have come forth, like the renters uh protection ordinance. Like there was a huge blowback to weaken that. And we should expect the same even around rent control. There's going to be tons of pushback from the real estate lobbyists, the Minneapolis area, um, area realtors association, which is going hard already. Um, we're going to see tons of pushback from them to get the weakest policy around rent control so that they don't ever have to cut or, or, or put caps on their profits. The same around TOPA. We're even seeing pushback on that of saying, people should be able to purchase, you know, or, or buy. And developers are like, no, this is bad. We don't want regular people buying homes in their community.
I think with uh the Airbnb thing, I think the city banned uh people from having more than one. Is that, does that sound familiar to anyone? I think the uh, I think that was a big fight recently. I, I've heard the landlords complaining about that. I think we have banned, or I don't know if it's been implemented, but I, I think that was a thing. We'll have to.
I would say check it and then check Sonder because that there clearly are subsidiaries.
A big opponent of, of that policy. I'm sorry, I don't have the facts of that in front of me right now, but it's uh, it's one of those under the radar landlord issues where they're very upset about the Airbnbs.
Mm hmm.
Jason.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I know that there had been discussion around it, but I didn't hear that um something specific was passed. But I could have easily missed that too. Um, so when you look at um something like public housing, obviously that's something that, you know, starting back in the eighties started to get a real bad name. Um, like when, you know, Ronald Reagan started the, the horribly racist um lines about welfare queens and things like that and people living in public housing um and making money off of having children and welfare and things like that. Um, all things that are completely untrue. Um, when you look at Minneapolis, like where we have a dearth of public housing, is that something that you would want to take on in your first? I mean, obviously this would be a, a two-year uh timeframe. Is, is that something that you feel the community is looking for and would be behind and would, you know, help you, would want you to pursue with your, your fellow um city council members?
I could definitely say in war two, where there's been, you know, one, we have one of the oldest public housing allotments, Glendale um townhomes that is right in the mix of all this high-end luxury housing development. And that's largely why there is these privatization attacks on it. That's being like, honestly, that has been launched by my current incumbent, um, by NPHA and largely through two specific things, RAD and section eighteen. So for me, as elected official, I would like to see those policies be reversed. I would like to see us use, I, I don't know if folks saw this article today about the Minnesota reformer uh from the Minnesota reformer where we're about to spend, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars to pay out police settlements. Why that couldn't be used to also um support capital improvements of, of public housing like Glendale Town Homes? And what we often hear is there's no money for it. So that's why we had to sell, you know, Elliott Twins to um, you know, um, was the, the Canadian bank, um, but to a Canadian bank. Um, and that's why we also need to sell off, um, which one?
Oh, I just said right, right.
Yeah. Oh, no, but the same, there is the same efforts to do that with Glendale Town Homes too. So I'd like to reverse those two policies. I would also like us to set a, a mandate of us meeting those capital improvements because honestly, they're not that drastic. Um, and there's research at the federal level that shows that Minneapolis has some of the highest quality public housing in the nation. So this argument that is being touted by some of my own challengers or even NPHA that we just have really broken public housing like New York, that it requires us handing it off and into the highest corporate bidder hands, that's completely false. Um, so I would like to see those two policies were reversed and as like extension of um addressing the deregulation of our housing market. Um, in addition to, I would like to see us prioritize funding the development of more public housing, especially on uh vacant lots and to bring in small, um, especially black and brown indigenous developers to do that. And actually let's invest in creating a, a multitude of housing options that could either be, you know, uh, housing co-ops, which I lived in as a graduate student, Como student, community co-op. Like one of the only places on, at the U, you can actually get low rent, especially if you have like a, a family. I would like to see more investments in that. I would love to see us invest in expanding land trusts and actually put up public housing into those land trusts to make sure they stay a public good. So I think public housing is definitely a priority, especially for residents in war two. Um, and really strengthening and protecting what we have, which is being sold off so rapidly.
Let's talk about housing some more. I, I heard your answer. It sounds like you're against the twenty forty plan. I think it was a bad idea. And I was reading on your website, uh, it sounds like a reference to inclusionary zoning where you want to up the percentage of affordable units required in all new development to at least fifty percent based on thirty percent of AMI area meeting income. That, uh, so I'm not a development finance person. And when they were debating the IZ policy originally, they were kicking around numbers like, should it be five percent? Should it be ten? Should it be twenty? And it was based on sixty percent AMI. I think the, the policy they landed on was eight percent of units at sixty or with a subsidy. And sorry for throwing out all these numbers, but uh just trying to establish what, what the policy is. And then a, an option with subsidy from the city at fifty percent AMI, twenty percent of the units. So. So looking at what you're proposing fifty percent affordable at thirty percent AMI. I, I know the developers will say, and uh, as a non-development finance person, I probably would agree that nothing will get built uh at those, at those numbers. That's really high. That's, that's like, that's a policy that does, doesn't exist in the country. I think any, anything close to that. So i- is the intent of that to just stop all development or? Cause I, I'm not sure how that would work or that it would work at all.
Let's set a precedent as a city. I mean, there's partner with our trades, get people trained. Like there are tons of people who would like to do development right here in our own city. Um, we could purchase the tools for that to happen, like this idea that we have to settle for creating housing that is either create housing that can't be used by anyone or no housing at all. Like that is a false conundrum that I think we're told time and time again. It's the same argument that we heard around fifteen. If you raise, you know, the threshold of, of what it means to have quality wages in the city, then the, the business sector will abandon us. It's the same argument then of if you actually say that majority of the housing that has to be built actually has to be affordable uh for a majority of residents, then if we can't have that, then no development will take place. And history has shown time and time again, that has not happened. I think it's creating the, the demand for it to be so. Um, and you can attract developers who would want to do so. And also, I mean, this is me as an organizer of also looking at, there's a lot of professionals. And I actually had this conversation with like the architecture lobby where if you make a hundred K like me, I live in a, a, you know, me and my husband, we pretty, we're pretty set, you know, financially. But the idea that I should have to tolerate paying more than thirty percent of my income to a corporate developer because I can afford it, that's problematic. And I think a lot of professionals, especially many of us who are, who have tons of debt, we need to shake free from that ideology that I have to pay majority of my income towards shelter alone and not have disposable income to one, reinvest back into my communities. Cause we hear time and time again, we should be supporting, expanding small businesses. Kind of hard to do that if most of my money is going towards my landlord. Um, and second, can I take a vacation? Can I take my kids on a vacation? Cause it's kind of hard to do that too, if I can't um, and I'm pouring all my money into rent alone. So I also would like to organize a lot more of our professionals to like combat, which is what we did around fifteen and against like the big business community saying that, no, you have to uh basically settle with poverty wages. That is not true. And professionals and poor folks, you do not have to settle for this tied argument that developers that are largely driven by Wall Street interests that says that you can't have nice things. You can't have your rights met unless you settle for us taking all your money or you being homeless. So I was actually pushed back, like history has shown those same type of arguments. This is not, it's not true. They're not going to abandon us. But we keep continuing to be the bitches of landlords and the corporate developers. That's not getting us anywhere either. It's getting a lot more tenant campments.
Yeah. So it's, it's an argument you hear all the time and you have to parse out, well, what is true? What, when are they bluffing and when are they telling the truth? And at a certain level, if you say, well, we're going to extract this much and this many times more. I mean, eventually it gets, it gets to be high enough, you know, a hundred dollar minimum wage. Is, does that force, force enough companies to uh move out of the city? Maybe. Like at a certain level, like the impact is real. Uh, but they do bluff a lot at the, at the, at the levels that the policies actually get set at. I, I'm just questioning whether like, cause that, that's an extreme example uh from your website.
But they, they, every time we make a demand about having uh, a regulation that actually addresses our needs, it's posed as an extreme. You know, the eight hour work week was also interpreted as extreme to corporations at a, a, a point of time as well as child labor laws. Like anytime you make these demands, there's, there's always going to be met with opposition. Um, same at the federal level, the fact that people at a federal level, we're still at seven dollars and twenty-five cent. And same thing of, you know, getting big business to push the democratic uh establishment to cower and not pass a fifty minimum wage. We saw the same thing of like, oh, businesses are going to leave, you know, urban cities across the nation. They've already left because you constantly roll back protections from working class people. You've made it easy for them to extract and not give anything back. So I don't, at, at every level that we've made a demand, you're always going to have that opposition. At what point do you stop making concessions to corporate forces? I think that is the job of a politician. And that's the job of like building grassroots coalitions to not make those concessions time and time again, when literally we have nothing to show for it.
Okay, let's move to public safety. Uh, so you're running for a two-year term. That's, that's what the city council, uh, every, every candidate on the ballot is running for a two-year term. So thinking about uh just the, the nuts and bolts of what it looks like. Cause, cause a lot of people are, we've been presented with this false question of like, are we, are we going to have police? Are we not going to have police? Which is just not realistically the question, especially for the next two years. The police department exists. So what are you looking to, like practically speaking, as it manifests itself in people's lives, create over the next two years in terms of, assuming the public safety charter that passes? Uh, what does that look like?
Mm hmm. Well, let's take the scenario and, you know, with the recent polling, it shows great promise that, you know, the public safety amendment will pass at forty-nine percent. So let's say, you know, it passes, the job of this city council, the incumbent is going to be, how do you set a strong department of public safety? Who is going to be in charge and oversight of this? Um, since now that will not be relegated to um, just uh, you know, the chief of police any further, cause that institution will not exist. Um, you will also have to set policies around um, what services is going to be incorporated into this new department. Um, and I think most importantly, which I don't think is getting a lot of amplification, but the accountability measures over this department because we, I think is because we, I think is very clear that the Minneapolis Police Federation has not served or successfully um executed their uh obligations to have uh quality professionals um that patrol our cities and patrol our, I mean, patrol our communities. Um, so for my campaign, one of the clearest things is that transfer of or establishing what services is going to exist in our department. And for my campaign, that means 311 and 911, you're still going to be able to call someone when you're in crisis and you will have a crisis responder. I think a big, uh, the big part of that is actually expanding the pool of what type of crisis responder can, you know, meet you in your time of crisis. Um, so can we now, you know, massively hire mental health providers? Can we also hire uh culturally uh informed uh mental health providers, substance abuse counselors? Can we also have partnerships with housing counselors? Because we should not be sending armed police to evict in this place of shelter residents. Um, so let's actually employ some people who can get folks housed. Um, let's also employ uh professionals that have a background in sexual violence and know how to support survivors. Let's also employ uh professionals that have backgrounds in domestic violence. Um, so I would like to see the unarmed uh workforce be expanded to address many of these crises that do not require someone showing up armed. Um, another big piece, as I mentioned, is the accountability measure. My campaign supports uh the CPAC um campaign, which is essentially says, you know, they want to over uh in-state uh civilian re- uh review board that will take up disciplinarian um actions on public safety workers that, you know, violate or assault and harm our communities. Because also what we've seen in other public uh departments, social workers and mental health providers are just as capable capable of doing or uh, you know, engaging in misconduct as as police officers. So we're gonna have to have some accountability measure uh to make sure those workers do not um harm or create further harm. Um, and if so, you gotta go, let's find, maybe put you in a broom or something. Maybe dealing with humans is not your jam. Um, another thing that we will like to see within this new department is the demilitarization. Um, the department should not be a storehouse for military grade um munitions that we have largely and only been seen deployed against civilians, especially um in moments of distress when a police officer has committed violence amongst largely a black and brown indigenous person. Or actually, in the case of Justine Diamond, um, a white civilian and resident. And so we would like to see the end of that. Um, and because you're a city council person, you have oversight over the budget. So we do not want this department to have the same financial struggles or be placed under a landscape of like austerity. Uh, we want to see this department be fully funded so that we can have quality um public safety workers. We can also make sure people have the, the resources that they need to provide quality programming too and services. So we would like to see this department be set up with the funding that it needs to do that and accomplish that. Um, so I think those are some of the the clearest things. And again, we have our whole comprehensive uh program set up um at robinfromminneapolis.com that goes into some more of the intricate policy levels of again, some things it's like, you will not be able to wear the blue lives matter uh paraphernalia as a public safety worker. That basically means you think you are above law and the rest of us are like trash. Like, no, you can't do that. Uh, we would also like to see a a new oath be um established in the constitution because right now police officers tell the chief of police, you know, I will do X. And that's it. That's not a democratic process. That doesn't say that you are actually working in the interest of your, your community. So we want to see a new oath be created. But a lot of those things are included um in that plan on our website that people can check out. But those are some of our initial things of what we would like to champion with this new department of public safety. But also they can still be champion without it. Like, we can still have these things.
Here's something I'm hearing lately and it's uh, well, we could create this department of public safety. We don't need to change the charter. We could fund all these things without changing the charter. And I have an answer for this, but uh I'd like to hear your answer for this in terms of like, why do you need to change the charter to fund these alternatives? Like, wha- what is the point?
I think the point is noting that at this current level or the minimum requirement, we should, you know, is is 888, whatever that number is mandated. Um, I think the base goal of this is to say that we should be building up, you know, a public safety department as well as other social public infrastructures that will guarantee residents, you know, the fully resourced and safe communities that they deserve um to the point where we do not need to have uh, you know, a high number of police officers, armed police officers patrolling our communities. So let's actually in the future strive to make sure that we're not hitting, you know, high numbers of 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 armed police staffing. Um, so I think that is the basic guise and people hear that. It's like, what? We will never have police? No, we should be striving for a future and not even a future. We should strive to have what East River Parkway has or what, you know, Summit Avenue has, where you do not see police officers on every corner. You don't see them uh shooting people and killing people during traffic stops, you know? Why? Because those communities have the resources that they need for everyone to have a quality of life. Um, and if a crisis is there, a a public safety worker can respond, but at least they're doing so with a smile and they're not trying to harm you. So I think that is the ultimate goal. And also acknowledging the same um programs and proposals that we're advocating for under this new department have also been advocated for within M P D. But there is a refusal and a inherent resistance to take up any type of changes. And you know how that's affirmed is by the fact that we literally have a police um force that is staging a a a work stoppage, intentional work stoppage, because community members last year after the execution of George Floyd said that we should not be having chauvins in our department. We should not be having armed folks to respond to petty crimes. And they say, you know what? Really? Okay. We ain't doing nothing if you want us to change. So there's a huge rebuttal. I I mean, even within this current, current leadership, I like to cite the example of Art Knight, who was a African-American veteran within the police department who got demoted after literally saying, yeah, we got a couple of bad hours, apples, that should be let go. Immediately, uh, you know, demoted for that. So there's resistance to it.
My, my favorite Art Knight story was that he said something like, there, there's a certain percentage, some tiny percentage of of cops who just should not be cops. That's what he said.
So we just can't judge that three to, I mean, we have three to six percent of cops who shouldn't be cops. And and I'll be the first one to say that. We have some members on this department who shouldn't be here, but the vast majority of them should be here.
And uh, so the public information officer's response to that, John Elder at the time, was like, no, he didn't actually say that, except he said it on camera at City Hall. It was the most normal thing for anyone to have said, yeah, there's a tiny number of people in this profession who just don't belong. Like you could say that about any profession. It's, it wasn't the most like fiery statement somebody could have made. It was the most normal thing in the world. And the M P D had to pretend that he just didn't say it. It was astonishing. It's like, it's the most horrifying John Elder story I can think of. And uh, I mean, I mean, he's lied about some crazy things. But like, why did you lie? Why, why did they need to lie about that? That was a normal thing to say. Like they will lie about anything.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's the whole thing with John Elder particularly, but that sort of a a role is, you know, just the, the information that they spread isn't necessarily to keep the public informed or be a more transparent part of city government. It's specifically to make themselves look better. He is the depart, he was the department PR person. Um, you know, i- if we're being honest. And um, you know, we've talked a little bit about um questions two and three that will be on the ballot. Um, you know, the public safety amendment as well as uh the rent stabilization measure. I wanted to ask you about question one, um, the, you know, quote unquote, strong mayor amendment. Um, I had asked some people on Twitter, you know, if they had questions that they would like to hear you answer. Um, because I do think unfortunately in Minneapolis, our, our politics all tend to like fall into this extremely large bucket of D F L candidates. So it's rare that people get to hear from someone who isn't specifically running as a D F L candidate. And that was a question that somebody brought up is like, what? They're very concerned that the um question one will pass. And how do you see the role of the city council then um be, being the, you know, sort of the voice of the citizen? If that should pass, how do you see that working out? And how do you, how would you go into your role to make sure that you were still able to do as much as possible to advocate for people in Ward Two?
And I'll say this, the work of my office when I'm elected, it, it doesn't change whether one, you know, passes or not. I think as a socialist, my job is to, one, you know, organize working class people behind, you know, a set of demands and policies that they are driving and that will address, you know, the inequities that they experience on a day-to-day basis and, you know, make our city a more just and equitable place in all of its functions. Um, but most importantly, like I'm coming in with an organizer's perspective. That doesn't happen through, you know, standard surveys that, you know, the city sends out um in some of these transactional measures. That's going to take and which is why I, you know, created my community commitments. Like we want to have an office in the ward. We're going to donate all of my staff, a portion of our salaries to hiring, um, you know, folks to staff that office and to also support, you know, doing actual uh petitioning, to do canvassing in the community. Um, to gather inputs, to hold forums, to hold organizing meetings about these things. All of that still is necessary. Let's say one passes. That means we have a consolidation of power, not only, you know, just power in a sense of one mayor, but also a consolidation in the forces that typically um drive the status quo or preserve the status quo. You know, corporations, big business, the downtown council, um, the real estate lobbyists, like they are going to be super happy. And largely because I, one of the things that you all mentioned, I think in the Twitter of like, we finally only got one po, one person that we got to buy. We ain't gotta worry about the rest of these 13. We got one who's going to make executive decisions. And so that means, you know, it's going to be an uphill battle fight. Let's say one passes. And especially if we have the nightmare of, you know, our current mayor being reelected. We know that, you know, two, uh, questions two and three are going to go up against offensive attack by those same forces. They're gonna try their best to weaken it and stall it. Um, and we're gonna need a city council, which is why I'm running. Um, that's going to bring a fresh perspective of actually how to organize people to push back against that dynamic that already exists without one. You know, we already have those forces that are largely doing a lot of work to weaken, um, install a lot of the mandates that our residents are are driving and organizing around. Uh, the most clearest in recent examples is the East Phillips in um indoor farm project. Like that was tainted through uh, you know, inside uh city department staffers uh who just didn't want to see communities actually have a win and actually oversee development in our city. So to me, those same dynamics is going to need or to have an organizer in office that be able to proactively gather constituents around shared interests and shared, you know, uh values and a shared agenda. That is going to be needed more than ever. Um, in this election and and beyond, rather what one or two happens, we're gonna, we're gonna still have an offensive fight and battle to create any strong policy around um questions two and three or anything, you know, in that matter. Um, so that's why I'm really excited to be running, to bring that perspective and that experience. And that does not exist in our ward as, as of now.
We just crossed the 63 minute mark, Robin. Here's a question for you. Is this, is this too long for a podcast? Are we, have we gone too long?
I mean, if it's a good one, again, like.
Well, you, you've just lived for 63 minutes. Tell me, is this a good podcast? That's the new question. Is this a good podcast that we're experiencing right now?
I mean, of course I'm biased. I'm gonna say it's good because I'm on it. Like, yes.
Yeah.
All right. We're, we're gonna keep going. We're not stopping. Right. We'll probably cross the 80 minute mark. Who knows? Who knows how far we'll go? Keep listening to find out.
I hope y'all don't have kids.
I mean, I don't. Jason, right? Do, do you have kids, Jason?
Uh, my kid is 21, so.
Named, named Jacob.
Keep forgetting that, cause.
You named your kid.
Twenty-one, like, it's just crazy.
Thank you.
How are you so old? How are you so old, Jason? Answer that one.
Um, I am blessed with extraordinary genetics. Um.
Nobody said you looked, I didn't say you looked good. I just said, how did you get to be so old? I lied. You, you look good, Jason. That's surprising. Why, why did, why did you name your child after the mayor? How did that end up happening? Jacob?
My, my, yeah, um, my, my child is named Jacob, but uh that was uh, not after the mayor. It was after um my, it was after my ex-wife's uh brother.
No.
So.
In case your child runs for Minneapolis mayor, they could say I'm the good Jacob.
Yes. We did bring Jacob on the podcast to read mean tweets about Jacob Fry with that exact uh idea. So, um, yeah, that was, that was actually one of our, our more popular bits that we've done. I still get people asking me about that and when we're going to do it again.
Really? I didn't realize we had any popular bits.
Well, part of we does.
Okay, wow. Let's get back, let's get back to substance. Let's get back to substance, Jason. Enough of this diversion, making fun of you.
So, you know, we, we've covered a lot of like the, the really big. I think, you know, there are some really big issues that everybody talks about, you know, in this, this election as far as public safety and housing and transportation. Um, and you know, especially public safety tends to be what we're all getting hit over the head through the media with. Um, so what are some things that you're interested in, in championing or working on that? And understanding that those things really do underpin a lot of city politics. Um, but what are some areas that you're excited to talk about that aren't in, you know, those questions that everybody is getting asked right now?
The third pillar of my campaign, which is taxing the rich. And largely for the things that we've outlined, you know, the crises that we're experiencing didn't happen on their own. And it's largely through, um, you know, city officials, um, at all levels of governments, literally placing, you know, our collective wellbeing into the hands of forces that only cares about profits and they do not care about anything else. Um, and we were hit over our heads that we had to sell, you know, our future, our needs. Uh, we had to sell those off to the highest bidder. And, you know, the wealth that we create for them through our labor will, you know, certainly come back into our communities and our needs will be met through those trickles. That has been a lie. And that has absolutely been a lie when it's come to black and brown communities that have had to pay a higher, you know, they've had to pay a, a, a higher burden in tax for this extractive model of, of our economic model that we've allowed to take hold of our cities and our communities. I think of North Minneapolis very closely, which is housing where, you know, they've had a huge number of the single-family homes be purchased literally by Wall Street real estate firms um that are flipping these homes and charging double, you know, the rent of your average, you know, home there or average mortgage there to largely black and brown folks and treating them like crap. So to me, it's time to have these same forces that we subsidize, you know, for them to amass all this wealth, for us to take back some of that wealth. I would like for us to take all of that wealth back, because we create it and we don't see any of it. Um, and to actually take and create revenue through fees, through taxation on, you know, some of these uh corporate conglomerates that inhabit our city to actually finance many of these things that we want to do around, you know, creating more um, a, a green friendly city um and to create green infrastructure, to develop and create more uh city-owned housing and public housing um to actually support, you know, equitable development that allows, you know, black and brown and working class people to do it instead of like the monopoly that we have right now when it comes to development. So I would actually like us to see us do this, which we know has been failed at the statewide level. There was efforts to try to tax, you know, some of the wealthier um households and corporations. The rich fought back against that. And now we're seeing they even with the infrastructure bill at the federal. The rich fought back against that. And now we're seeing they even with the infrastructure bill at the federal level, you know, that the rich do not want to pay their fair share.
And I've got a, I've got a follow up to that. So when we talk about, uh, you know, running for city council, what is, what is the mechanism as, as a city council to tax the rich? I'm reading this one section, generate new sources of revenue. This is from your website. Generate new sources of revenue for social programs by taxing the Fortune 500 companies in Minneapolis. So I'm wondering, what is the mechanism for the city to do that if the state is standing in the, in the way of that?
Through fees. We collect a pretty sizable portion of our revenue through fees. And if we actually tie fees to development or corporate developers, you know, uh, I mean, corporate development, housing development, uh, we can actually, uh, create new sources of revenue or pull those, uh, uh, sources of revenue, um, through other means. Another way is through penalties. Um, as you mentioned earlier, that, you know, there is apparently or potentially a tax on Airbnbs. Clearly that's not enforced. Um, I would like to see revenue be, uh, actually attached through penalties or some of these forces, especially thinking of Target, uh, there's, uh, tons of work that is being done by Workers Rights Center right now in Minneapolis, just around wage stuff alone. Millions of millions of dollars are taken from workers every single year by some of our largest corporations in the city. And our Department of Labor standards is so underfunded and overburdened that they don't have the support to enforce this. I would like to see that be enforced and to actually have revenues. Like you're going to be fine for violating this. Another means is through property taxes. I think we really should evaluate. And I know in, uh, Mayor Fry's recent budget, he's actually proposing we raise property taxes so that we can essentially be able to pay out more money in settlements to police officers who want to stop working or because they feel so traumatized that the communities demanded better of them. That they're going now on PTSD, you know, and disability. So I would actually like us to look at, no, we're not, uh, corporate, corporations like Target should not be paying small rates of, of property taxes or at the same rate as like your, your family that owns a single family home. So there's a number of measures that currently exist that we can actually start to build this revenue from. And we can also be creative. I think that is also, it's, the thought that as city council, you can't be creative, like use eminent domain. Like there's so many things we can try to also enact this ahead tax. I mean, Seattle figured it out. We like trying to do a head tax on Amazon so that they could pull in $200 million annually to actually build housing. Like, let's be creative. This is the opportunity to do so. I mean, do we really have any other choice? Or are we going to continue to subsidize businesses that don't meet the needs of our communities and take more than they give?
So just to elaborate on the, the short term rental thing that I mentioned that we talked about earlier, just, I looked, I looked it up. And what the ordinance is, is limiting owners to one property besides they want in, the one they live in, which would cut back on the, uh, or eliminate entirely the, the sort of large corporate, here's, here's an entire building full of short term rentals thing. Although I'm not sure if it's been implemented fully yet. I don't know, but that, that's as much fact checking as I'm going to do on this episode. Jason, we, we usually don't do any fact checking of our episode, but.
Yeah, we usually just, you know, assume that, that we know enough to, to muddle through.
We just have to be honest that we don't know anything. That's the disclaimer on all of our episodes. The hosts do not know what they're talking about. Jason.
Back to you.
Back to you, Jason.
Yeah. So I, you know, that's a, a really, I think a really fascinating way to look at it, um, you know, in terms of thinking creatively. And I think one of the, the other things that you had mentioned earlier is having the political willpower to do things. Last, you know, I've talked to Jacob Fry about things before and I, you know, after the uprisings last summer, I encouraged him, you know, to take his next year in office to be bold and to be, um, creative and try to, you know, be the progressive that he claims he is. And his main response was, you know, well, we have, um, these things are settled in black ink law and we, you know, I can't pass anything that is illegal under state law and things like that. Which I look at and say, you know, the, the reason that, for example, abortion care is in so much trouble in this country is because Republicans, um, and conservatives have for decades been passing illegal laws, um, just to keep trying to push the, the ball forward inch by inch. And I think that it's, it's, um, it's well past time that people on the progressive side start doing the same, um, and start, you know, trying to push our current framework as far as it will go and then create new law around that. So, you know, as we look at the city going forward, hopefully, you know, we'll have a progressive city council and we'll have a progressive mayor. You know, that's going to take everybody's efforts because as you mentioned, the city is, does have a, a sizable portion of people who are very invested in nothing changing. In, you know, kicking the can further down the road and just saying, well, you know, that uprising that happened a few years ago, that was bad, but things aren't, you know, we don't need to really address that anymore. We got through that. So when you look at the people who are running currently, are there any people that you would be really excited to be on city council with? Are there people that you look at and say, yes, this is somebody that I, I would be excited to talk to and, um, to write legislature with?
I think most immediately I would have to say my fellow, um, DSA and DSA is Democratic Socialist of America, um, my DSA slate, um, and largely for two things, you know, one, we share a socialist analysis that the market has not and will never work to meet, um, our public needs. And also that we should make it, we should make mass investments into the public goods. We should protect them. We should expand them. Because that is the place where, you know, we can actually create equity and no longer have people who are relegated to, you know, second class citizenship and, and, you know, actually address racial inequities and make sure people's needs are met. So I think politically, you know, I'm really excited to work with fellow socialists, um, especially looking at my hometown, Chicago, that now has its own socialist caucus and seeing, you know, the challenge, challenges that they've put up, uh, to the corporate establishment there. That is also dominates every function of life in that city. And then also because we share similar platforms there, you know, we all are going in, in support of rent control. Um, and also will work with communities, um, to fight and advocate for the strongest rent control policies. As well as around public safety, uh, all of us support the public safety amendment and are committed to making sure we have a department that doesn't create more harm, that isn't just another, uh, a rebranding, um, project of, you know, the police. But actually we are committed to making substantial changes because George Floyd deserves that. Every person in the city deserves to have a public safety system, um, that actually meets their needs. So I would have to start with them. And some of the folks that, you know, I'm really excited. And also the first, like we've never in the city has had socialists in office. And other cities are now taking that up. I mean, India Walton could be actually the mayor of, and likely will be the mayor of, of Buffalo, New York. Like, I'm really excited to actually have a socialist caucus and socialist representation in Minneapolis in a place that has for far too long been dominated by liberals who care more about profits than people.
I've got two quick questions, Jason. Can I ask my two quick questions, Jason?
Absolutely, John.
Thank you. I don't, I don't, I don't actually need your permission, but I, I ask anyway. This is my podcast. Okay, Robin, here's my first quick question. What committee do you want to serve on? Give us an idea of what, what area you'd like to, to concentrate in. What, what committee would you like to serve on?
Oh, good old committees. I would love to work around planning, a lot of the, the measures around housing, especially because of the 2040 plan, I know has to deal with heat pad. I would also like to serve on housing, but also I guess any of the committees that relates to housing and planning, but also recognizing that work does not happen, like change is not made through committees largely. In my experience.
I mean, you're passing laws, right?
You're passing policies somewhat, but I've also seen them be a places where change goes to die. Um, so I mean, there's been, for instance, like my incumbents on, or chairs of housing, uh, committee. And it's like, that's great. As a renter in Ward two, I can't tell you the benefits that I rep from that. So I mean, sure, I'm, committees are a place where you can create some change, but I'm more so also interested of working in our communities outside of those spaces to also shift, what policies are being created and pushed forth at the committee levels.
Here's my second quick question. And I think this goes, this goes out to all of our audience because I'm sure we can all relate to this question that I'm about to ask. What argument this election year is getting on your nerves? What is, what is the worst, the worst argument you've heard this year that's irritating you so much, you can't stand it, you want to tweet about it, but you're a candidate for city council and you can't tweet about it? What's getting on your nerves, Robin Wansley? What is getting on your nerves?
All this stuff. Cause again, we're like independent and that's great. Don't have to worry about pissing off like Waltz or anything.
You can tell this is a good question because it takes the longest to answer.
Cause there's so many. It's the both and, Lord have mercy, that one gets on my nerves.
You can do, you can do a couple. I'm willing to accept a couple.
14 bosses.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's start with both and like both hand, both and to me is just so inherently racist of when it comes to public safety. We need policing that can, honestly, it's the reverse. We can't have public safety that can both not uphold exploitive and violent conditions in our communities. And like not kill black and brown people. Like we both, we can't do both. We have to have one or the other. Because that's essentially what you're talking about. Like there is not any system of policing that cannot just go and target homeless people, target poor people, target black and brown folks. Like that does not exist. So and, and I interpret it as like, oh, you want a system that continues to protect the rich and beat people who look like me asses every single day. Um, I hate that argument with the passion and I hate Jacob Fry for like popularizing it at the level that it has, um, as well as all of Minneapolis and Operation Safety now.
For, for anyone in our audience who's been under a rock this election year, both and is the phrase that, uh, Mayor Fry uses to say, well, I'm for a both and approach, police and, and all the alternative responses. I'm, I'm the only one in the city who can, who can give you everything. The, the other side is calling for, you know, on December 2nd, getting rid of the, the police department entirely. They're all gone. That's how he characterizes it.
What? You will still, I mean, sucky of like, you're also acknowledging city council and the mayor has fully funded policing at its current staffing, staffing levels for the next two years. So they're not going anywhere.
Right. We're hiring, we're hiring cops and yeah, the, that's, that's an irritating argument. I can give my answer is, uh, the lawsuit that the judge bought saying that, uh, MPD, MPD might disappear on December 2nd, just goes away. And the judge bought it and I'm mad about that. That's irritating me. Jason, do you want to give your answer to this question? What's irritating you?
Oh, I like Robin, there are so many, but, um, she brought up a really good one, um, with 14 bosses. It's, it's, um, facile and I think it's insulting to tell people like, oh, this is, as soon as the city council gets any sort of authority over police, they're going to have 14 bosses. Well, I like, as somebody who has worked for large corporations, I can assure you, I've worked at many times for more than 14 bosses. And I can assure you that I didn't have 14 people every day coming and telling me what to do. I can also point at other examples of city departments, um, that are out there that fire department, um, you know, any, um, the housing authority, things like that. You know, it's not like we're hearing stories about, um, you know, Andrea Jenkins and Lisa Goodman showing up at the housing authority and telling people how to file their, their, um, forms to housing and urban development and things like that. It's just a ludicrous argument, um, all around.
Yeah, they want, they want to cut the 13 elected representatives out of the process for public safety. That's what they want to do. Like those people.
It's anti-democratic, like at the very basis and also like honoring the truth. It's also retaliatory. Cause we have had such a failure for our elected officials to like come to some common ground around issues around public safety and housing that communities have had to take means. And let me tell you, like, it's the last resort for any community to have to do a charter amendment campaign because they are expensive, they are tiresome. And again, if you're working like an ordinary person, like have a family, like people don't want to have to spend two years to change your charter in order to say like, look, pay me better wages. Look, stop killing me or sending police officers to kill me. So like, it's a last resort and the charter commission was like, what? Y'all want to successfully do this and that should make democratic changes? Guess what? We're going to take that power from you and consolidate it to one person. And it's just like, clearly it's a retaliatory measure. And also thank you, Jason, for bringing up the fact that across various public and private industries, you look at corp, I mean, private corporations, your favorite target has shareholders. So their CEO is reporting to 14 bosses. Same at a nonprofit, your favorite nonprofit, your executive director is reporting to their board of directors. University of Minnesota Board of Trustees, like literally every, across all industries, like this model exists.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's, it's a really lazy argument. And I think at a, at a more elemental level, it's kind of, you, you hit it exactly on the head. It's an anti-democratic argument. And that's scary that people look at these things, um, and say, you know, the way for me to feel safe or to me to feel secure or me to feel comfortable even is to put all of, all of the authority in one person's hands. You know, because, you know, looking back in history, oh, when has that ever been a problem? Especially for the people who have the, who currently have the least in the system, right? So I think, you know, it's, it's frustrating and it's sad and it's scary to see people kind of taking on this very proto fascist argument of saying, you know, you can't have more than one person in charge. It has to just be one, one strong man in charge of everything. The, and I also, you know, fully believe that nobody would have ever made this argument if it wasn't a white male in charge at the time. Nobody would ever say, we need to put all of our power in one woman's hands or anything like that.
We are trying to do that with MPD, like trust Arredondo. I mean, it is pretty hilarious. Arredondo has like a better favorability in polling than like our mayor. So folks would be cool.
No one will criticize him. If you, if you've occupied this space where you're not allowed to be criticized, of course you're going to be the most popular person. Like everyone has spent the last two years saying, this is not about the chief. We love the chief, chief forever. No matter what side of the debate you're on, uh, he gets no criticism. And I'm not saying he's bad at his job. I'm just saying I don't have any evidence that he's been great at his job. I'm just saying I don't have any evidence that he's been great at his job, uh, based on what we've lived through. I don't know. It seems, it seems like a problem beyond the control of, uh, just a very special, very nice chief.
One person, African-American man cannot just rule out the racism of the department. Yeah, like that's just.
Right.
Yeah.
We're at one, we're at 90 minutes, Jason. We've gone too far, gone too far again. And I think we, we have to go into our final, final question, right? You're not going to delay us any further, Jason, are you?
Not this time.
Okay. So, so the last question we ask on this, uh, Friday night, and thank you for spending your Friday night with us. Uh, I know you probably could have been relaxing and taking a break from the campaign, but you chose to be with us instead.
It's kind of relaxing in some ways. Y'all are funny.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, uh, you know, campaigning is hard. It's a, it's a hard life. What are you doing? What are three things that are making you happy that you turn to during this election year to make you happy? Could be a walk in a particular place, a book, a movie, entertainment of any kind. Uh, you know, a game.
Your family, anything.
An experience, three things, three experiences that you could recommend to other people to make them happy.
Oh, to other people. Okay. Cause I was going to say, actually, my campaign is a source of joy for me. I was like, this is great.
I mean, you could recommend to other people to volunteer with your campaign and have that joyous experience of helping you be elected. That's, that's how you turn that question around.
Thank you. Thank you, Edward. I'm going to do exactly that. I derive so much joy from like building independent political power in this city that I would encourage everyone who's listening to this to come and volunteer with our campaign, especially five weeks now, uh, left to November 2nd, to actually help put a black, our city's first black socialist city council member in office and actually fight some bold, for some bold changes. So yes, come through on that. And we're going to make sure you're fed because one of, uh, the second experiences of running for office, uh, or just in life, I love food and war two is like great for food and I'm, I'm going to slide this in coffee. So we're always either at Shifa, which I don't know if folks know about, but like they have great food, uh, East African as well as Indian fusion, uh, best mango curry you will ever have in your life. And then we have great coffee. So then slide down straight to Dogwood and like just chill. Or you can go, um, to, uh, Milkweed and get you a caffeine, caffeinated beverage with CPD, CBD. There we go. Not, I mean cannabis, but it's the next best thing. Um, so we have great, just great, like food options and I love food. Um, and when you actually talked about lakes, like what I will also like appreciate about war is like, we have the Mississippi, like that runs straight through and just being able to go for a walk and just see the beauty. And also just being by water and nature, especially before it gets cold and depressing and grungy. You just look at dirty snow, um, like really take the time to appreciate like our lake. No, I mean, we have some Minnesotans who also during the winter will walk on lakes. I'm black. I don't do that. I'm not, I'm not at that level. So, uh, I like to appreciate it while it gets the flow, um, and while the leaves change. So definitely going for walks along, uh, East River Parkway. Um, and just like, yeah, being soothed and calm by nature. Um, but yeah, I would say those are kind of the three, three things. Get you some time by the water or just in nature. Um, put your phone on D and D. Don't bring your computer with you or just go out to eat. Wear your mask, get you some food or takeout.
I enjoy food. Those are good recommendations. Food, nature and campaigning. Although I don't, I don't enjoy, uh, election year as much as you seem to be enjoying the election year.
What are you doing with good people? I mean, great people, it makes a difference.
You're responding, you're responding to some irritating arguments though. So, but, uh, we won't, we won't drag it out any further. This episode is over. And, uh, my thanks to co-host Jason Garcia and our guest, Robin Wansley Warloba. Oh God, I did it again.
You did it though.
Warloba. Warloba.
Yeah, we got Warloba.
Okay. If I failed, I failed at this closing. Rob, Robin is running for city council in war two, Minneapolis city council. Uh, she's going to be on your ballot. And I encourage everyone to vote this year. Uh, I'm your, I'm your host, John Edwards. I almost forgot. This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. Thank you for listening.